It's 6:30. If you would join me in standing for the presentation of the colors.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting this evening, I know that all of you are aware of what has happened in Paris. This is our longest and longest lasting and our first ally as a nation. And I would ask that each one of you join me in a moment of silence and your thoughts and your prayers for the people of France. People who have been courageous, people who have been with us in good times and bads, people who have been our friends from generation to generation. We're now going to go to item number three on our agenda. Citizens be heard. Mike Simpson. Mike, if you'd come up, give your full name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Mike Simpson, 100 Ripple Creek. I have two items that I'd like to talk about. First of all is the Roadrunner's article on National Night Out. Seems that the Roadrunner did a great job of thanking y'all for doing everything that was done and was completely silent about the citizen organizer of the neighborhood night out areas. I find that really distressing that you hold the reins of communication and you refuse to acknowledge the one person who got all 12 of those block parties set up and going on our own nickel. And y'all had the one up here for $5,000 of tax money. I think that's really unacceptable. And I think you owe Dr. Fanning an apology for that. The other issue is the holiday event, that the only religious observance there is Hanukkah, which to me gives the impression that the city is favoring the Jewish religion over all other religions. There's no mention, there's no indication that the whole winter holiday centers around Christmas, the Christian holiday, but y'all are giving the preference to the Jewish holiday. Got no problem with Hanukkah. It's a great recent holiday, but I think that you've set us up for trouble if someone is really offended that either you're imposing that on us or that you're excluding others. And I would ask you to think about those two things and take remedial action. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring us to item number four, council comments. Alderman Barrier.
Welcome, everybody.
Alderman Heitzman.
Good evening. I just want to thank all the first responders that are in our city and all across this country that protect us every day, the military, and those that fight for the freedom that we so dearly embrace.
Alderman Heizel.
Appreciate all the Boy Scouts in the presentation of the colors tonight, and thank you all for being here.
Alderman Maisel. And I want to thank you for being here as well.
And I think that there are a couple of them that are left probably working on merit badges. Appreciate y'all. Y'all did a wonderful job posting the colors. It's been a long time since anybody's posted the colors in Chavno Park. Brings us to item 5.1, presentations, commendations, and announcements, Holiday Festival. Alderman Maisel.
Okay, so this year's festival, we will be once again lighting the Christmas tree. That will be done at dusk. So as soon as it gets dark enough that we can actually see the lights on the tree, we will light it. We're going to have the Blackman Choir again this year. And this year, while the kids are waiting for Santa, instead of having the crafts inside, we're going to have arts and crafts, take and make, or make and take, outside, but we will have a string quartet inside for the parents who are waiting in line to see Santa. And we're going to have children and pets who can come see Santa. We're also going to have games this year so that the kids can play some Christmas games. We're once again going to have vendors. So if you need Christmas gifts, this is the time to get them. We have 20-plus vendors that have volunteered to come, have come to Chavno Park and sell. They're going to sell things like food items, arts and crafts. Pets are going to have some Christmas gifts for their pets. It's just going to be a wide variety of things. So if you haven't picked up a gift, this is where you can get one. And we're going to have our food trucks again. And this year, we'll have two different types of real food as opposed to just desserts. So bring your money, bring your credit cards, come join us for that Christmas event. And I did want to mention, on December the 6th through the 13th will be the Memorial Lighting. That will be happening at sundown.
Okay. Question on the string quartet. Is that going to be the Clark String Quartet?
Your wife got the string quartet. I don't know.
I think it was the Clark String Quartet. But, okay, thank you very much. Item number 5.2, Team Dennis.
So, for those of you who could not attend or did attend, October 31st, Team Dennis did the ALS walk. And I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in Team Dennis. It was a great showing for our city and for Mr. Carolyn. He had 30, 40 people there. And just to let you know how well-supported Mr. Carolyn was, he had the most donations of any team, was our own Chavno Park's Team Dennis. It was a great event. Lots of people came. ALS made a lot of money for research. And I want to mention that, Mr. Carolyn, all of the money that Team Dennis raised went to ALS.
And I commend you for your participation in that. Also want to acknowledge as a fact that they sent a thank you, a very nice gracious thank you letter to Bill Hill, thanking the community for their participation and their support for Team Dennis. So I commend everybody in the community on that item. Brings us to our regular agenda items. And without objection, I'm going to request that we move item 6.3 to the first item. As a procedural item, we need to consider this before we go on to consider item number 6.2. So the agenda items will be 6.3 followed by 6.1 followed by 6.2. Is there any objection? Without objection, we proceed to item 6.2. Bill, do you have some presentation that you'd like to share with us on this item?
Yeah, just briefly, on the October 26th, the council met, we discussed the application for assisted living CC use for the property on Lock Hill Selma. The developer, being Paramount, they're represented here as well. During that use, the council approved a draft ordinance in the first reading with a two-bed room limitation. On October 29th, a couple days later, city received an updated PUD request because we had considered the CC use and the PUD. We first considered, we first received an updated PUD request which clarified the use as an assisted living facility, but also included a provision for a two-persons room limitation. At that point in time, I asked Bitter Blue to not only send me amended PUD request application, but an amended CC use application clarifying the two persons per room application. I received that on the 9th of November. We received that revised application for special use assisted living facility CC use, which again clarified the use as assisted living facility and two-bed room limitation. So we've heard it before. There's been a number of presentations associated with that. And that's the background. If there are any further questions, Paramount is here, and then they can address any specifics.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions concerning the revisions to ordinance O-2015-023, an application for special use assisted living CC for Chavno Park subdivision, Unit 17N, a 4.03 acre tract of land situated in the city of Chavno Park? This would be the final reading. Do we have any discussion and comments? Alderman Maisel?
Yeah, my question is, why are we changing it to two persons per room as opposed to two beds per room?
Yeah, that was the application process that originated from Paramount. They're here, and I think they're best prepared to answer that question.
Good evening. How are you doing? Excuse me, because I wasn't here for the previous ones, and that was my fault. But as far as the beds go, not to bore you with details, a typical nursing home, on average, a large nursing home is 120-bed facility. We build oversized rooms, and there's a valuation that's put in to how many licensed beds you have in a facility, whether you use those or not. Because we build oversized rooms, all of our rooms actually meet the three-person criteria that's set out by CMS and T-Dads. But because we build a larger room in this particular facility, this is going to be a higher-end facility, so we have two therapy spaces, two dining areas. So we have more than what is typical in that space. And so when we started doing all that, all of a sudden, at the end, we got down, our actual bed count was 112. So it was on me to try to get that up to a normal 120-bed valuation for a facility. We had no intention to utilize those rooms as three-person rooms. That's a hard sell to make. But it's really, for the most part, it's from a valuation perspective, if that makes sense to you. No?
A lending.
Let me say, it's like you having a 4,000-square-foot house, and you have four bedrooms, and you have a study that's actually a bedroom, but you don't use it as a bedroom. But it has a closet, it has a window. There's a certain valuation that goes with that room because it meets a bedroom status, although you never use it as one, you use it as a study. It's kind of the same thing for us. Although we aren't planning on using those rooms as three-persons rooms, there's a valuation associated with having that number of beds in that building. So we're a family-owned business. We don't get outside capital. We don't have outside investors. It's all our own money. Whenever we go to build new facilities like the one we're doing here, sometimes we leverage existing buildings to help us offset those costs. The more valuation you can put into a building, i.e. through its beds, the more you have to be able to go out and do other facilities without going and getting money from other people, if that makes sense.
Now, the CC designation calls for it to be limited to two patients per room. Is that two tenants per room? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So by ordinance, they will not be permitted to have more than that. Now, Chief Naughton, do you periodically go in and check these facilities as the fire marshal? So there will be periodic review. Do you do that quarterly? Is that about how often you go in?
We're in them every month usually, but their true written inspection is twice a year.
Twice a year. So we will be reviewing to confirm that they are in compliance with the two limitations.
Are those inspections planned, or do you just come?
They're planned.
Well, then, if they had three people in a room, they could easily move one of those people if you set up a time.
That might be hard, though, Vicki, if they're full up.
It's not like moving you out of a hotel room. That's a very difficult process. The whole reason behind that is we were trying to get it from a licensing perspective, from a pure valuation perspective. So it's, a three-person room is a hard sell to make, especially in a place like Chavno Park. We're not, that's not what we're going after. We're going after the private client, short-term. They're in there on Medicare, or private-pay money, or on managed care, private insurance. It's just not something that we plan on using. Now, I will tell you this, there could be some emergency situation that we can't predict, or somebody else can't predict, where you may want that space. But that's not our goal, is to utilize that as such. And trust me, in that environment, we're not, I was surprised to hear that he says it's planned, because usually they just show up. Same with the entities that regulate us. They just show up.
Okay. Before we continue with the discussion, I noticed that I hit violate or a protocol, which is, do I have a motion to approve the designation?
So moved.
Alderman Heitzman has moved to accept ordinance O-2015-023, an application for special use assisted living CC on Chavno Park subdivision, Unit 17N, as provided, which includes a two-resident limitation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Barrier is second in the motion. Now, we'll continue further with the discussion. I apologize for not following your protocol. Do we have any additional questions?
If I hear you correctly, I think what you're explaining is that our ordinances will provide that in order to be compliant, there will be two resident restriction.
Yes.
Their evaluation process entails different data and calculations that don't have anything to do with compliance with the city of Chavno Park. Is that correct?
In what regard?
Yes, that would be correct. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question. Does the number of beds you need have anything to do with qualifying for government programs?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We will now proceed to item 6.1, public hearing. Receive testimony and comments on the request by Bitter Blue, Inc. to rezone a 4.03 acre tract of land situated in Chavno Park subdivision, Unit 17N, from B2 to B2 PUD to accommodate a revised number of parking spaces as an assisted living facility only. It is now 6:46. And we will begin the public hearing section. Bill, are you going to be the first presenter, and then are we going to invite somebody from Bitter Blue, or how are we going to do it?
I can just outline it again. Again, on October 26th, we brought this action to council. And the reason why we brought it to council was because as they submitted their plans for the CC use again, we noticed that the plans were limited to 72 parking spaces. Whereas in a normal B2 zoning area would be a higher amount of parking spaces. And we realized that it would be 221 parking spaces. But, so in order to meet our ordinances and still operate this living facility with the 71 parking spaces, they would need to modify the zoning to create a B2 PUD with that. So we considered that last meeting, and what the PUD was focused in on was the 72, didn't have some of the constraints on there, which included assisted living facility. Council approved the ordinance creating a PUD for the first reading with the constraint that when it came back to the final reading, it would be not only limited to 72 parking spaces, but it would be specified that its use was only for an assisted living facility. So again, Bitter Blue modified their request to include that language. We've modified the ordinance that you have in your packet. And now the ordinance in the packet not only includes the parking space limitation, but also that the specified use is assisted living facility, and we also included the two persons per room in that PUD application.
Okay. Is there anything that, Daryl, you'd like to add before we go to the, to see if there are any citizens that have questions that they'd like to direct during the public hearing section?
No, I believe, you know, Bill covered everything.
We're now open for public comments concerning the assisted living designation on this property as a PUD. Do we have any questions that citizens would like to direct to any of the presenters? Okay, if there are no questions from the citizens, it is now 6:48, and we're going to call the public hearing section of this meeting to a close. This brings us to item 6.2, discussion action, ordinance O-2015-024, request by Bitter Blue, Inc. to rezone a 4.03 acre tract of land situated in Chavno Park subdivision, Unit 17N, from B2 to B2 PUD to accommodate a revised number of parking spaces as an assisted living facility only. And what we're doing here, the PUD application, the only thing that is in the PUD application, the only exception that we're reviewing is the parking. All other aspects of this property are in full compliance with a B2 project. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Alderman Barrier has made a motion to approve the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Maisel has seconded the motion. We are now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Alderman Heizel.
This may be a question that is just confused because I'm not 100% familiar with the PUD process and land and covenants and all that. But what happens if 30 years down, when, if and when 30 years down the road, you, Paramount wants to sell the land? Is there going to be restrictions on the land that it's designated for a healthcare facility with those designations about parking?
We'll let Charlie address the legal question. Charlie, if you would.
Yes.
And if they want to sell it to somebody who wants to use it differently, they come before council.
They'd have to get a, they'd have to rezone the property.
Okay, that answers it.
In other words, a B2 for this size project would not be permitted to have 72 parking spaces. They're going to have to find a way to bring it up to the 120, 110?
Yeah, well, the.
221.
Yeah. The current zoning is a, well, this particular ordinance zones the property BU Planned Unit Development, which is a zoning designation, which, and that zoning designation requires that it remain, that it remain an assisted living facility, that the parking space does not exceed whatever it was that we said, 72 or 75, and that it's two people per room. So that's the zoning designation, and to use it otherwise, they would have to request a rezoning.
Okay. Now, that doesn't mean the council, a future council could say, well, we'll let you get by with that, but that's up to a future council. We cannot bind future councils. Okay, is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O-2015-024, a request by Bitter Blue, Inc. to rezone a 4.03 acre tract of land situated in Chavno Park subdivision, Unit 17N, from B2 to B2 PUD to accommodate a revised number of parking spaces as an assisted living facility only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Brings us to item 6.4, discussion action, ordinance O-2015-025, proposed changes to the Citizens Tree Committee in addition of a tree care, and a public tree care, a public tree care. This is our first reading. Bill, do you want to give us some discussion?
Sure. As we outlined the objectives for the FY 2015-16, one of our objectives for the council was to become Tree City USA. At the same time last year, we designated and we created a tree committee, and we formed that tree committee, having the first meeting in October, on October 20th. Our arborist, who is Mr. Mark Koozie from the Texas Indian Forest Service, presented at that meeting one of the agenda items, the criteria for municipality to be designated Tree City USA. He had gone through all of our requirements and in fact, our ordinances. And initially, I was told our ordinances are good to go. We have a oak wilt ordinance, we have a tree committee, we do Arbor Day, we meet the funding requirements. But as he provided to us, one of the critical criteria is that your ordinance cover public tree care. So our ordinances, we have a lot of ordinances deal with commercial tree, tree guidance and law, et cetera. We have the oak wilt. We created a tree committee, but we don't have anything that specified, what do we do with our public tree care. Public tree, public property includes municipal owned property, and that in the right-of-way. So it's a pretty easy fix. He provided us a template ordinance. What I've done is taken his template ordinance, and the staff and I have created a, it's two and a half pages, really deals with just the definitions of trees in the public right-of-way, gives us some constraints. It really basically gives responsibility to the city manager for doing that. It talks about the public tree care authority, public tree planting and care standards, adjacent owner responsibility, prohibition against harming public trees, certain trees declared a nuisance. And so as we looked at where we were going to put that, we said, well, we ought not just to reinvent the wheel, we already have a tree care, a tree ordinances, and that was in Section 14, 118. So the first thing we did is we originally had a Citizens Tree Committee. We're proposing that we rename that Citizens Tree Committee and Public Tree Care. And so I'll address the Citizens Tree Committee at the same time because, first, initially, because one of the recommendations we got from the tree committee was that we look at the responsibilities of the tree committee, and there's two proposed new responsibilities to the tree committee. One is to coordinate and promote Arbor Day activities, and the second one is to assist with the annual application to renew the Tree City USA designation. So that is the only change to the existing ordinances that we had. The other changes were the addition of the public sector of tree care. And you've got it in your packet. I've outlined that, where everything in yellow is the way it was existing. The green that you can see on the screen are the two new activities. And everything else is just related to the public tree care authority and responsibilities and procedures. So that summarizes what I had there. Subject to your questions.
Okay. I noticed that we have the vice chair for the tree committee here, Bob Radley. Bob, I'll add you as a presenter, if you have anything that you'd like to add to Bill's presentation. Okay, thank you very much. So we're now open for a motion and a second. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance O-2015-025, proposed changes to the Citizens Tree Committee in addition of a public tree, the addition of public tree care? Is there a motion? Alderman Maisel has made a motion to approve the ordinance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Heitzman has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number 5.6, discussion action, developing city of Chavno Park logo options for consideration. City manager, what would you like to tell us?
Well, again, in our goal-setting objectives, there was a couple items that we discussed. One was potentially branding the city, what's the city's brand and how we want to proceed. The other item was potentially rebranding the Roadrunner sticker that we provide to residents for their car. So that's been kind of on the back burner because we've got a lot of things going on. I did receive a request from Bitter Blue that near the Pond Hill area, they've got some signage they want to create. And they then sent me a request as to which Roadrunner you want me to use, because, you know, just for illustration purposes, in the top right-hand corner, we have the city of Chavno Park. The SP is the blue and green Roadrunner that we had, the city contracted in 2009, and that was the adopted logo. However, back in 2013, the city, over on the far left, top left, the city installed new signage in the older part of Chavno Park, and they used an older Roadrunner logo associated with that. You can see that's illustrated. Then finally, Denton Communities, actually Bitter Blue has been, as they've been developing the 1604 Loop, again in 2013, and I think we finished the action in '14, we authorized signage, corridor signage, that you see that's just being installed in certain places along the corridor. And in that corridor signage, Bitter Blue has used a stylistic Roadrunner, which you can kind of see the stencil diagram represented in the bottom right-hand corner there. So again, not that this is urgent, but you know, if we want to influence the signage associated with what's going on there, be consistent either with our logo, the previous signs, or what's going on in the corridor, this is an opportunity to do this. I had a conversation with Dixie Watkins, who I had a conversation with Dixie Watkins, who's the architect, and he's an artist that is associated with Bitter Blue, and I asked him, okay, you know, where do we start? Can I take that stylish, stylistic Road Runner and stick it on an SP and do that? Now, we don't have the capability and the expertise to do that, and he's like, well, you know, I could do something like that, but I would change it around. Basically, what he offered me was, hey, look, for eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars, I could, I could provide to you two or three potential designs in which you could look at, and you could compare a more stylistic SP with what you currently have, and you could then consider using that if you wanted to. And so I'm simply bringing this in front of council. I think that it's not a bad idea if we want to actually take a look at our logo and our, our branding and consider that. So the action that is being brought before the council is approve, an approval of Denton Communities to provide a design options using the stylistic logo, and they would probably change the SP, but it would be something similar to an SP with the stylistic Road Runner on there at the cost of eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars, and provide, then the city staff would bring that back to the council for consideration.
Okay, so the proposal is to limit the design considerations to only the stylized Road Runner, or would there be, would he insert the, the other two alternatives inside the same different proposals?
I, I was thinking that we, we, we currently have two different logos that we have been using in the past, that I don't know that you'd need to revisit those.
I think, I think part of it goes to how he presents the SP or whatever in the background. You know, our, our existing logo is just a Road Runner. Would we include a Chavino Park on there? Would we include the words Chavino Park? How would we designate the city? I think that's part of what Dixie's design magic is all about. So are you asking, are you asking council to limit you to the since version? Are you asking them to ask Dixie to apply his magic on this?
Well, I think we don't need to limit him, I mean, whatever he comes up with his artistic.
Okay, so you're requesting a budget authorization to, for Dix, to retain Dixie Watkins and Denton Communities to an upper limit of twelve hundred or fifteen hundred?
I'm okay with twelve hundred, Mayor.
An upper limit of fifteen hundred dollars? Twelve hundred, I'm sorry, with an upper limit of twelve hundred dollars to return in December to city council with alternative designs?
I will target that as a milestone. I will have to talk to Dixie and verify. I would hope it would be, you know, timely, so I'll, I'll work towards December, Mayor, and if I can't do that, we'll bring it in December, in January.
Okay, yeah, we, we actually, we, we need a motion and a second before we start our discussion, if that's okay? Okay, do we have a motion to have an authorization to retain Dixie Watkins and Denton Communities to provide stylized Road Runners, Road Runner decals for Chavino Park with a budgetary limitation of twelve hundred dollars?
So moved.
Alderman Barrier has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Heiselman has seconded the motion. Vicki, yes?
This logo that he's going to design, as opposed to just being the stickers on the car, is this going to be one that will eventually replace what's already on the signs? Once, once we need new ones, is it going to replace what we use on our stationary? Is this going to be the only logo for the city, or is it just going to be for stickers on the car?
I would say that's a council decision. You're going to have options, and then as we bring forward, then, when we consider the branding of the city, council should then consider, consider that. I mean, I think if it's a really attractive option, that we probably ought to look toward, I would recommend towards looking towards a consistent use.
But if he's going to design it, in that thought process?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Alderman Heisel.
Have we, have we done anything, or are we planning to do anything to obtain citizen input about the idea and about the options? I recognize we've got three choices up there that are not really choices, because what you're asking for is a budget to allow Mr. Watkins to create something. Are, do, have you thought of, or do you anticipate involving residents and allowing them to have a input in the choice?
I think that, yeah, after we get the choices, that we should then disseminate that out and, and look at a feedback mechanism for that. That's something that can be considered.
How much current product do we have on hand that would be replaced if council made decision to say, we're going to centralize and create a cohesive logo branding? Because, and I guess that may be a question you can't really answer if, if council hasn't told you, we're going to do car stickers, letterhead, business cards, road signs?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think that would evolve, you know, I think you would use, we don't have a whole lot of stationary and just packs, we order it as necessary, so that's relatively easy in the envelopes. I would anticipate you exhaust the, the, the supplies that you had, then you reorder it, and you transition that. I don't, I wouldn't anticipate coming to council saying, we need to change our signs. I think at some point in time, the signs get attrited, and they get damaged, or they get worn out, then there's a decision point to, to do it at that point in time.
Do we have, do we, I know the town plan contemplates a vision for the city. Is there any discussion in the town plan about signage, logo? And if there's not, is that something that we as a council need to address, to amend? Maybe that's a question for my colleagues to consider.
Well, you know, as, as a city, we have gone through in the last twenty-eight years four different Road Runners, and each time it has been council that has made the decision on which Road Runner was representative of the community at any particular time. Never with the idea that this is a permanent branding mechanism, although we did do a whole lot more in the permanent branding. We have the chairman of planning and zoning here, Mike, just to ask you a question, did, I believe that when the signs along Northwest Military Highway were being considered, that that was considered over a four, five month period of time, and so there was a whole lot of input as far as, this is the way that the branding is going to work and that signage mechanism. So there has been an opportunity for citizen input, it not necessarily equates to citizen participation, but there has been that process available. Alderman, yeah, Mary Ann.
If I heard, if I heard the city manager correctly, and I know what we did during our, our summer meetings and workshops, what we were looking at was trying to create a cohesive branding process. So it would impact signs, it would impact something that would be, I think the thought process was that it wouldn't be changed, that, that certainly we're not saying to future councils, no, you can't change a logo, but that the mindset was that let's create something that is easy to transfer over all the media that we use, whether that's city street signs, city stickers and what have you.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes. Alderman Heiselman.
Well, the, the concept of branding, we all agreed on doing that, and I think it, it makes sense. I guess my concern is, we, we have three right now, three logos out there, and I guess hindsight's twenty twenty, but I wish we had, had the foresight to sit down with Denton and determine what that, you know, what that Road Runner was going to be that went up on at least a couple of signs, because now we have, it doesn't make sense to me to, you know, continue developing that when we're doing something different here. I think we need to make a decision to go forward, but I think the, the three options or whatever it is that we have, I, you know, Monument, I would assume, which by the way, looks fantastic down there on the south end, I would assume we're going to put one on that sign as well, Road Runner at some point in time?
That's an option.
Sure.
It's an option.
And, and that, you know, I think we need to make sure that, that these are all standardized, no question about it.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? If we don't have any other discussion, do we have an authorization for, oh, I'm sorry, Alan?
I just, and maybe it's not germane, but do we need to trademark the logo in any way, or service market?
I think Dixie has already trademarked the logo, and we have a license to use the logo, is that correct?
I'm not sure if he's trademarked him, but we, we did make a formal request through Bitter Blue and Dixie Watkins, and he has provided us a release, an authorization that we have through a legal document that says that we are, we are authorized to use that.
So we're not responsible for protecting the intellectual property, but we are permitted user in all cases? Okay, Mary Ann?
I would, I would just like to, I know we have a motion on the table now, and I would ask my colleagues to consider amending it to include that we've got an agenda item coming up to discussing our social media, discussing the website at another time, I don't think that's on the agenda tonight, but we have those tools, we're going to be using those tools, and I think that part of the component of doing something that's going to be branding the city, we could do and use these tools to get input from residents. That's recognizing that council is the one making the decision, but asking for citizen input along the way on these choices, whatever they may be.
I'm good with that. I think it'd be kind of fun if we're going to have.
I'm not exactly sure what that was, because that was, I want citizen input, and I understand and I appreciate fully the citizen input, and that would be, I want, and I request that subsequent to this, before we accept anything, that we get citizen input, or are you asking to table this until another month? Because those are two completely separate actions. Which one are you asking for, Mary Ann? I just want to make sure.
I'm asking that if council is going to move forward to spend money on a logo, that the choice option includes citizen input.
Which would be, which we could add at the November, which we could add at the December meeting, and, and, because this is going to come back to us in all cases. We're not going to, we're not authorizing him to acquire anything, we're not authorizing him to acquire anything, and so I'm, I'm just asking, if we come back to this in December as a regular agenda item to solicit citizen input, is that what you're asking for? Or are you asking that we table this and we don't do anything at this time?
I'm not asking that we table this, I'm asking that we have citizen input.
Okay, and I, I think that that goes without, I think that the consensus is that we're going to get citizen input, but if you want to make a motion to amend to include citizen input, I would certainly entertain that motion.
I make a motion to include citizen input.
Okay, we have a motion to include citizen input. I think that that is a request as a friendly amendment. Do I have any, Mike, Alan, you moved, is that accepted as a friendly amendment?
It is.
And Vicki, or Bob, you seconded the motion. Do you accept that as a friendly amendment? So it, the, the motion is to authorize the city manager to review stylized Road Runners with Dixie Watkins and Denton Communities to return to city council, and that the process for authorization of the final design be with citizen input. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I think that's a great comment that Mary Ann made, and I think you could do a couple of things with it. You could, you know, you could go out to the, the citizens through the Road Runner and get input on the three final designs, there's a number of ways we can do that, but I think the critical part of it is that we've got, you know, we've got development, we've got signs going up, you know, with, with the development, and that to me is more, more critical than the stickers on the cars and the others. So I think we, if we come up with a standard fairly quickly, then we can move on with this, with the, the rest of our program, and I think we've all agreed that that's important.
Do we have any further discussion?
I just think that the Road Runner would be, the, the Road Runner, the newspaper, would be an excellent place to put three finalist designs, whatever, because that way they're visual, everybody can see them, and people can send in their input.
Or contact their council members.
Exactly.
Okay, if there's any, if, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries, which brings us to item six point six, resolution R two thousand and fifteen zero eighteen, authorizing the submittal of the surface transportation program for metro mobility, which is also our MPO application, the grant application. Bill, would you care to share something with us on this?
Well, only that, yeah, I will. And as you know, we've started addressing this question in two thousand and fourteen. Staff has provided a review as early as January two thousand and fifteen in regards to the Tech Dot plans for Northwest Military Highway. At that point in time, we realized that the MPO had a, had a program associated with a federal grant source that we could ping into. Council gave us guidance to review that, they actually sent it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission provided a series of reviews and talking points, we've had a number of meetings, we've come back to council and given some updates. And I will just kind of say that staff provided a detailed brief and, and the Tech Dot engineering schematics to the council in the October twenty-sixth meeting. I think Chairman Jansen also provided background associated with that. And so at that point in time, there was no requested action, it was just an update associated with that. Subsequent to that meeting on November third, Mayor Warner, the city manager, Chairman Jansen met with the regional Tech Dot Director of Operations and his staff, again, to do final review for considerations for the MPO application. During that discussion, we also inquired as to whether the scope of the project could be expanded to include a stormwater drainage system under Elm Springs with the outflow into the natural ditch behind Bike Way into the, into the Almost Creek. While the project has support from Tech Dot, essentially the bottom line on that was, no, they would not support any expansion of the project to include a drainage program, primarily because once you expand the, the project outside of the right of way, then they are constrained and restricted by a number of federal standards and requirements, and they don't typically do that. We took away from the meeting that the project has support from Tech Dot. Obviously, a ten percent overmatch would increase the scoring and consideration for selection, but is not required. Again, I think we've gone over the project quite a bit. Everyone knows that we're talking about a continuous turn lane from basically the junction from Hubner where there currently is one, all the way up to Northwest, to sixteen oh four. It would include a bike lane and a sidewalk on both sides. That summarizes what's occurred since the last meeting, and just a brief update from that. Again, assuming that the council will approve the resolution that supports the Tech Dot submitting the MPO project, the question that has to be decided is whether or not the city council wants to recommend adding a ten percent cost sharing element to the funds. And again, the, the total cost of that project anticipated is six ma, six point four million dollars essentially. So a ten percent match would be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. In our discussion and just staff's review of the grant application and where we stand, we are recommending that you approve the resolution, but without a contribution of ten percent. And again, again, it, it makes our project a little bit less competitive, but we do know that the selection process is done in a number of ways, using public input process as well as a vetting process that goes through a subcommittee, a technical subcommittee associated with that. And, okay, you can hear me now. So, and because we have Tech Dot that's sponsoring this, you know, it's hard to predict, and even the Director of Operations could not say whether or not he thought we had a good chance or not, but he, Tech Dot supports it fairly strongly, which is a good move. The other piece is that there's some action and coordination going on with, with Joint Base San Antonio on the Northwest Military Highway extending from sixteen oh four north to the entrance of Camp Bullis. As the cornerstone school gets built there, we believe that there's an opportunity for us to engage with Joint Base San Antonio to get their support, as well as potentially Cornerstone, and, and then as we go through the process, beginning in the beginning of February, March, we can then look at strategies for the public input process, having the mayor, the chairman of planning, zoning, and other citizens come talk on behalf. There is a voting process that actually goes on, and I don't know if it's online, or, but I believe it's online to where we can get the word out. but I believe it's online to where we can get the word out, and if we have broad support from the citizens, all that will count into the selection process. But a, again, at worst case, we submit it, TechDOT submits it, it does not get selected, but it's, at least it's on the table. And then there's a, you know, every two years, this project comes up, but ultimately, TechDOT's responsible for providing for the, for this road. It's a TechDOT road, and the safety of that road is important to them. And so at some point in time, I'm feeling confident that this will be picked up, whether it's, TechDOT funds it by budgeting for it in the future, whether they find an alternate funding source, and potentially, there's other funding sources that exist, but this is the one right now, which is, we're competing for.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Chairman Jansen, do you have anything that you would like to add? I'll, I'll include you as a presenter.
I'll just add one thing, and I thought it was important, just to read what Bill said. TechDOT really likes our proposal. I think they like everything about it. They like the continuous turn lane, they like the sidewalks, the all-street sidewalks, they like the curbs, they like the bikes, the bike trails. I think they like everything about it, and I agree with Bill. We talked about it, and I don't support the city putting money into the project. I think TechDOT's going to have to do it one way or the other, and by their support of our, of our design, I think they're sure that they want to do it our way. So I'm very encouraged by that, and I think it'll get done, like Bill. It's going to get done, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We're now going to open this up for a motion and a second. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2015-018, authorizing the submittal of the Surface Transportation Program for Metro Mobility, grant application by the city without any contribution? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Maisel has approved to, has made a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Heinzelman has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion? Alderman Maisel.
I do have one. When this gets approved eventually, is, how difficult will it be for us as a city to fix the Elm Spring Bike Way at the same time? I mean, is that possible? Can we coordinate us fixing the drainage at the same time? Because as they fix that road, it's going to change the way the water runs.
Good question. You know, what we basically did do is we said, "Look, when you add asphalt inside, and concrete, et cetera, you're going to have drainage." And they said, "Well, the project has to account for that drainage. It can't then produce any more drainage, or it can't increase the drainage or the stormwater runoff," and that they would have to find, you know, solutions within the project. And so there's several places where the actual stormwater falls off of the Northwest Military Highway and it goes to the west, back at Hubner, north of Elm Springs is one, and then up there near the Pond Hill piece. So there's some opportunities to take the extra stormwater runoff that would be there, funnel that into those three areas associated with that. In terms of the Elm Spring, there's a number of ways to deal with Elm Springs. That was just one of the options. That's something that has to be considered. I don't know that you, you really need to do it in conjunction with their construction. It can be done beforehand, it can be done after our, it could be done simultaneously.
Did that answer your question? Are there any other questions? Alderman Heinzelman?
Well, I just wanted to, I thank you for your candor on the, the 10%. I fully expected in the last, you know, six months or so, as we've talked about, that that was going to be a requirement that we needed to do. I want to reemphasize or just ask again, this is a project that I think is, and I've had four or five discussions in the last two weeks with residents, constantly asking me what we're going to do to improve the safety and all the things we've talked about in Northwest Military. So it is critical to our city, but I think we, what worries me is the opportunity missed, and it sounds like we're pretty confident it's going to happen at some point in time, but I think many of us that lived in San Antonio for the last 25 years are confident that someone would have a clue on the freeway system and figuring out the infrastructure that we've missed out on compared to some of the other major cities that, that we know have done a much better job. So I don't want to be short-sighted in, in our decisions, but to me, it sounds like you guys are very confident that the 10% is not necessary, and I certainly don't want to spend the city's money on something like that if, if it's not.
And, and City Manager Hill has been working on some alternative plans to build support in the MPO voting process at this time, and, and I think that we're going to be pleased with some of the ideas that he's come up with. So looking forward to seeing how the fruit, whether, whether that bears fruit or not. Any other discussion? There's no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number 6.7, Discussion Action Resolution R 2015-019, Voting Phase of Selection, Voting Phase of Selection Phase of Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2015, 2016, 2017. Bill, thank you for being the presenter, and please play, make note that Alderman Ross is not here as we make our decision as far as our nomination. Bill?
A couple of months ago, we received a letter from Bear Appraisal District, which outlined the nomination process for the Board of Directors. That gave every, every voting member an opportunity to nominate persons for the Board of Directors, and in, in October, we voted to nominate Michelle Ross as a candidate for the Board of, of, of the Board of Directors. So I, actually, that was September. I apologize. We received a letter on October 26th referencing the voting phase, which included Michelle Ross and a number of other candidates. That's attached into your package there. And so, as you know, we have five votes, and we would then be responsible, we have the opportunity to, to select a candidate using our five votes, and it would be tallied up associated with that. You have the, the letter, you have the, the candidates associated with that, and with the council's recommendation, we would forward that action to the, to the appraisal district.
And so is your recommendation that we submit all five votes for Alderman Ross?
Yes. My recommendation is to approve Resolution 2015-14, and nominating Michelle Ross as a candidate for Bear County Appraisal Board of Directors.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Alderman Maisel to approve Resolution R 2015-019, Voting Phase of the Selection Phase of the Bear County Appraisal Board of Directors, 2016, 2017. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Maisel. Do we have any discussion? I think it's only fair, she's not here. Yeah, I, I think that that, I think that's-
Always vote for the guy who's not here.
That's right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.8, Discussion Action Resolution 2015-020, Approval of the City of Chavano Park's Social Media Policy. Bill?
Well, the city has a number of areas where we don't have policies. One of the areas is no social media policy exists, and as we look to outline our webpage and look at expanding into different options, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, which we may potentially do in the future and get more effective, we believe that we need to have a policy that outlines that. This proposed policy is limited to providing guidance to the city's staff on the creation, maintenance, and deletion of social media accounts for the purposes of conducting city communications and businesses. So I asked Curtis to take a look at that, give a draft. He looked at a number of different city ordinances on social policy. He came up with Austin's as a, as a template. Austin has actually a pretty extensive policy associated with that. We looked at it, we modified it a little bit in terms of meeting the city of Chavano Park's needs, probably simplified it a little bit. You've got your draft policy associated with that. We're recommending this be city policy number six. You can see it provides some references and overview, the purpose of the policy, which really kind of provides guidance that we already know. A lot of it's common sense, but, you know, it helps when it's in a policy that it's actually written, and you can actually refer to it, and then you can say, it gives you some authority to enforce your policies, et cetera. It provides some definitions, and really appoints someone that provides oversight to the social media policy that we do. Talks about creation and deletion, approval, and, and gives some principles and guidelines. You know, don't post personal opinions or positions, understanding they're widely accessible, retractable, not retractable, I'm sorry. It talks about records retentions, as well as the right to monitor and control that. So pretty simple policy, two and a half pages. I think it provides us the guidance we need.
Okay. Charlie, did you have input in this policy?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any input in your office on this policy?
Yes, our office reviewed the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Curtis, is there anything that, I'll add you as a presenter, is there anything that you'd like to add to the comments that have been made by the city manager?
The reason why I chose it based on the city of Austin, not only because the city of Austin is half the size of Bear County, it has about twice the size of social media programs, so, and obviously they're affected by that, and their policies are very general, not overly bureaucratic, centralized, but very common sense to that.
Thank you, Curtis. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve Resolution R 2015-020, Approval of the City of Chavano Park's Social Media Policy. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Berry has made the motion, and Alderman Maisel has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion concerning the same? Alderman Maisel?
Mr. Leith, what do you think makes the policy that Austin follows so successful? What do you think makes them be good at what they're doing?
It means social media is inherently not bureaucratic or traditional in the sense of centralized top-down control, and so I think Charlie gave us the city of Houston's and the city of San Antonio's. And so, you know, city of Houston's approach varied in a centralized top-down, you had approval for postings and such, and Austin's was more of, and certain staff members gave authority over the, the responsibility of it, and they're being held accountable for what they decide to post on there, but otherwise, they don't have to constantly, every time they post a update, get approval of the change in the map. And I think it's important that if, you know, let's say the Chavano Park Police Department formed a feed, or a Twitter feed is formed or over formed, that, you know, that whoever is assigned by the city manager to update and maintain it has a responsibility over it, but if they want to post a picture of the truck as it's doing silk clothing, that the city manager doesn't have to follow it by them.
Okay.
And do they follow the, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission? Do you know the policies that, that?
I'm, I'm not sure, but it's the state of Texas.
Okay. Well, the reason why I ask is because I went to look at the city of Austin based on the information that y'all provided, and, and the, the way that they maintain some of the things is not something that we're currently doing, and I'm just wondering if we're going to start modeling that or if we're not. But you may not be able to answer that question now.
Example, in the way-
An example, the video archiving, you can go back to, I went as far back as 2009, and you can watch the videos of the city council meetings from 2009. I think we take ours down after 90 days. Is that correct?
Yes, but I'm not sure that's social media policy. That's, that's really, that was one of the other ones that we proposed. There was two policies that, that I worked with the city attorney on. One was the use of city hall, the other one was use of city publications, so I think that's kind of more in line with, with that.
Okay. I, I think, I recall that the reason why, why it was not allowed to keep after 90 days was reference to the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, which is what we're referencing in this social media policy, and that's why I asked the question.
Well, each, each community can adopt and modify those rules. There are baselines that are provided, that you cannot be shorter than a certain period of time for certain types of electronic or, or written reservations. The deeds have to be retained in perpetuity, audiences are-
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with that.
I'm just saying that-
At all.
You can pick shorter periods if you want, or longer periods.
I don't disagree with that at all. My question was, what makes Austin so successful? And, and I think part of it is the, the way that they use social media, and that includes the, everything, from video archiving to Twitter feeds to Facebook.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Okay. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2015-020, Approval of the City of Chavano Park's Social Media Policy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. It brings us to item seven. All matters listed in the city manager's report are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. I'm going to request that a limited, limited discussion of the police department be provided by the city manager on an update of our injured police officer. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to have discussed or presented? If there is nothing, then, Bill, if you would present, if you'd just give us an update on our injured officer?
Yeah. What I can tell you is that last week, there was a incident where we pulled over an individual, and during the discussion with, with the individual, the police officer identified the fact that he didn't have a license, he had warrants out for his arrest, and then he started to apprehend him, and he was tackled, and there was a, basically a fight that ensued, and backup help came, and they subdued the guy. In the meantime, he had, he sustained an injury to his arm. And so, again, he had a, an appointment afterwards, we think he has a sprain bicep, but he's got to follow on an appointment next week, and so he's, he's off duty until that diagnosis is further refined, and he gets guidance from the doctor in terms of what can or can't happen.
Yeah. He, he's on paid leave.
Yes.
Is it possible for him to be on paid administrative leave, where he assists the chief-
At some point in time, we, we've done that in the past, where we've had a policeman who went through a process, and then he was, he was cleared for light duty, and so he came in and then did that until he was healed. But there's a period of time which we-
I, I know that I speak for the council members when I ask that you extend our thoughts and prayers to him. Does anybody else have any questions that they'd like to direct on this report? Okay. Okay. Which brings us to item eight. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any council, any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items, items 8.1 through 8.7. Do we have a motion for approval of items 8.1 through 8.7?
So moved.
Alderman Maisel has made a motion to approve on the consent agenda, items 8.1 through 8.7. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Heinzelman has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. It brings us to item number nine, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alderman Berry has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman Maisel has made a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned.